St. Charles County Council Meeting of September 30th, 2019. This evening we have for the invocation Pastor Kevin Kolb. And after that, I will, I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Will everybody rise?
Let's pray. Father God, we come to you and we're so thankful for the opportunity we have to acknowledge you as we do business for this county. As I think back about the time that I moved here 23 years ago, Lord, you've allowed me to live in this county longer than any other county of my life. And I'm so thankful for the civil servants that are here that help this county remain safe and secure and have purpose as it plans for the future. Lord, as we consider the words of Paul from Romans 15, "Now we who are strong have an obligation to bear the weaknesses of those without strength and not to please ourselves." Each one of us is to please his neighbor, living for his good, to build him up. For even Christ did not please Himself. As we think about these words, Father, we, we are just encouraged and ask that you would help us to, to live in light of our neighbors, those who are discouraged, those who are weak, those who are hurting, those who may not have as many means as others among us. Lord, I pray for the council and the executive branch, Lord, as they make decisions, as they guide and steer our county, that they would do so as servants to those who are weak and struggling. So to that end, Lord, give them wisdom tonight as they listen to the voices of the people, as they interact and consider and make decisions. Father, we thank you for the staff, how they support the county employees, and, Lord, just bless them, supply their needs, protect them, give them health and strength. And Father, may each of us follow the example of Christ, who didn't come to be ministered unto, but came to minister and give His life a ransom. And may the God who gives endurance and encouragement grant us to live in harmony with one another according to Jesus Christ, so that we may glorify God, the Father of our Lord Jesus, with one mind and one voice. Amen.
Amen.
............
Have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Joe Cronin.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Brazel.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Ehlman.
Here.
Councilmember John White.
Here.
Councilmember Dave Hammond.
Here.
Councilmember Terry Hollander.
Here.
This evening we have a public presentation, Gateway Home Truffeting in St. Charles County, by Shima Rossstammy. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Please come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the council, for giving us opportunity to come here and present you one of the biggest problems we have in the county, as we have it in everywhere else on this planet. So, and also thank you for Mr. Ehlman, for his wisdom inviting us and asking me to contact Mr. White to have us here, because I'm here to provide you and the community some facts about human trafficking which happening here in St. Charles County. So, please be patient, I'm trying to figure out, okay, we are on. Okay. So, it's, it's about five years I'm working in St. Charles County to provide community education about human trafficking and child exploitation, to educate the community, because we believe education is the key to combat human trafficking. And the reason is victims of human trafficking, they are most vulnerable, community members among us. And for many reasons, they don't seek help, they don't reach out to law enforcement, they don't reach out to their families. And this is really up to the community to be educated about human trafficking, so that they can recognize it and identify victims of human trafficking. During the past five years, working in St. Charles, I've been collecting most misconceptions, most common misconceptions about human trafficking, which are here, as you can see. Often people think human trafficking doesn't happen here. And also people thinks that victims of human trafficking are poor people. And also they think that human trafficking is only sex trafficking. And then also people think victims will attempt to seek help when they are in public. Then people say, if the trafficked person, which is a victim, consented to be in their initial situation, which means that they knew better, so this is their fault. And because this is their fault, this is not our responsibility to help them and survive them. Unfortunately, all of these facts I shared with you, these are misconceptions that the community have. And the reality of human trafficking is very different. Here are top five methods that traffickers used in 2018 to traffic vulnerable people. As you can see, all of these methods goes under force or fraud or coercion, which coercion is manipulation. So we have, we had isolations, we had economic abuse, we have threats of any kind, we have, you know, emotional abuse, and also we have physical abuse. And as you see, only 3,159 cases in 2018 in the, in the United States were cases via physical abuse, which means 19,056 cases of human trafficking were under fraud or coercion. And the other common questions community asked me, they asked me what is coercion? And that's the best image I could find to define for our community what is coercion. Coercion is what you see, you see someone does something, and we think that person actually is doing that, and that's true, that person is doing that. But the reality is that that person has no control over what they are doing. For example, we see people deal drug, because we see the evidence of the drug in their hand. But the reality is that we don't see that person was forced or manipulated to deal the drug. Our goal and our job is to educate our community about all of those factors and different ways traffickers use to manipulate victims, who are vulnerable people of our, of our community, including children, people with disabilities, senior citizens, to help them get out of this trafficking situation. We have been very fortunate in St. Charles County that have had a great team of law enforcement and also our prosecutors, Mr. Lomar and his team, they have been prosecuting human trafficking cases the first day they came to the office. And by the way, St. Charles County has been the only county in the state of Missouri have prosecuted most cases of human trafficking in the state of Missouri. So in that case, I'm going to show you a video as an example, a message Mr. Lomar sent to the community to educate them. And after that, I'm going to present you the cases of human trafficking we had in St. Charles County. If you pull up the video, me.
She's, she's listening, she'll.
Yeah, okay.
Hi, Joe, Mr. Cronin. Is he one of the traffickers?
I hope not.
Traditionally, law enforcement is more reactive instead of proactive, whether that's with cases like this or any other cases. I think we realize now that because the human trafficking is a global epidemic, it doesn't, it's not just relegated to one part of the world or one part of the country. Like here in St. Charles County, for example, we're a suburban community, we have human trafficking cases here too. I think people need to understand that these victims are in fact victims. There's, I think, a tendency to have sort of an antiquated view that they've done something to put themselves in this situation, so in some cases, they, they deserve these consequences. I think we need to get away from that. We need to understand that there's a whole other set of reasons and circumstances that you'll never know, but those are the reasons why these people may find themselves in situations as victims. So we need to understand that they are victims, and that's a mentality change. So I would encourage teachers also have those conversations with your students, because you, as a teacher, can really impact those kids probably just as much, and in some cases, if not more so, than their parents in these formative teenage years. The message to parents is pay attention to what your kids are doing, talk to your kids, have dialogues with your kids, make sure they know that there's no subject that's off limits in the conversation. We all could get better at that as parents and certainly educators.
Unfortunately, the number of cases that we have, high school students at schools recruited by traffickers to recruit students in our schools is increasing. It's shocking, but it's an epidemic, it's a public health concern. We need to make sure we are able to provide enough information for our families, school districts, and every community member to know the signs and red flags of human trafficking, so that they can help law enforcement and our prosecutors to recognize it before it happened, not that it's very late. Here, they are all cases we have had in St. Charles County. These cases started from 2012 until 2018, they are all cases we have had in this county, and yet, St. Charles County is number one county in the state of Missouri for prosecuting cases. It shows how severe the crime is and why victims do not want to come and ask for help, because of the fear is going on, because of the culture of shame and lack of community support. However, if we educate our community about human trafficking and child exploitation, we are able to support most vulnerable people more than any time else. And also, I just shared with you one of the cases we had in St. Charles County in December 2015. It happened in Red Roof Inc. at Zombel Road, the hotel. So, law enforcement, St. Charles law enforcement were able to survive the girls that they were trapped in the hotel. And overnight operation, they took them in a safe place. You won't believe what happened in the morning. In the morning, the trafficker showed up at St. Charles Police, and he claimed that he wants to bail his girls out. This was shocking, because you never can imagine the criminal comes back to the police station to ask for his girls, to bail them out. This shows how serious is this crime, that even the criminals, they are conducting that, they have no shame to even come to the justice system and continue what they are doing. So I start, I close where I started, thanking you for providing us the opportunity to talk to you about this severe crime is going on, and also let you know that we are not able to do this without you. Our law enforcement, Human Trafficking Task Force, the supervisor, he would love, he wanted to come here tonight and share his information with you, but unfortunately, all of them are working on different cases that they are undercover. And because they are undercover, and this meeting is going to publish on social media, they were not able to present. So they provided me the information that we wanted to share with the council, to just let you know we are here, we are trying to do our best, but we need your help. And in case, if you need more information from our Human Trafficking Task Force, they would be more than happy to present their experience and information with the council in a private meeting, that we can protect their identity to do their job. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
We want to thank you for bringing this to us, and we appreciate all the work that you've been doing, so thank you.
Thank you. Is there any question?
Any questions, gentlemen? No.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is a public hearing, public, present, oh, a public hearing on traffic regulations. Before we go into that, I'd like to see if Mr. Tychowski would come up and explain how the process works.
Periodically throughout the year, we get requests from residents to requesting new kind of traffic regulations, whether they be stop signs, no parking zones, various regulations of that type. We compile those requests and bring those before you, and have two public hearings. Tonight is the second public hearing for the most recent requests that we've received. After tonight, we will review the comments that have been provided, we'll go out and look at the sites, analyze the conditions, and then come back to you at some point in the upcoming months with a recommendation towards, in the form of a proposed ordinance for your consideration.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Tychowski. Is there anybody to speak on traffic regulations?
Ryan Floyd.
Good evening, my name is Ryan Floyd, thanks for giving me the chance to speak tonight. I live in the neighborhood where this regulation was proposed. I understand the proposal is just to close a short section of public street, and I believe a private street intersects with that, that a lot of the neighborhood residents use to access and exit the neighborhood. I'm concerned that if we approve a closure, it's going to benefit just a handful of folks at the expense of probably 100 other folks that live in the area. I can empathize with those that requested the closure. I think we all have a few cars in our neighborhood, regardless of the street, that probably drive too fast, roll through stop signs, things like that, and I'm a father, I have kids, I'm very concerned about that as well. The main concern, I feel, would just be that the other roads going into and out of the neighborhood, there's, I want to say, two or three, and I, off the top of my head, I can't tell you how many houses are in the neighborhood, probably several hundred. I don't think the existing roadways can handle that much extra traffic in a safe manner, they're, they're narrow, cars park on both sides of the road. When those cars are parked on both sides, the other cars, it's one way at that point through there. And the same thing applies on Teresa Fields, where they're proposing the closure. Oftentimes, cars are parked on both sides, so traffic is limited to one car at a time getting in between those vehicles, which does help keep the speed down. People have to work together so that they can navigate through those areas. The rest of the area, in order to, if we were to even make those other streets, no parking on one side, just to accommodate the extra flow of traffic, those areas fall under the city of O'Fallon. So there wouldn't be, unless we had some kind of proposal to work with the city to increase the, the flow of traffic through those areas, I think this would make things a lot more difficult for the residents and visitors in that area. One of the questions I had for those that are concerned about the proposal, I don't know what was presented before, if anything, I'm not sure how many traffic violations have been identified on that road, if any enforcement actions ever been proposed or taken from law enforcement or anybody asked. I've been a law enforcement officer for 16 and a half years, and I travel that road quite a bit. I see maybe a handful every month of excessive speed, but nothing that I would propose closing an entire street for, or roadway. So visually estimating the speeds of vehicles is something that I've done in my entire career, and then confirming that through speed timing devices like radars and lasers. So, that area has a hill and a curve, which can be very misleading and make things appear faster than they actually are, so I don't know if perhaps residents may be concerned about that as well. The other thing, if you, if we did close the end of the street, I don't know how a, how that would be constructively formed into like a cul-de-sac or a turnaround, where a vehicle could safely maneuver there without taking out huge chunks of people's yards as well, so. And then I don't know what the cost of these things would be that the taxpayers would have to, or the public or the county treasury would pay for. Other than that, I don't have anything else for you, I appreciate the time. Did you guys have any questions for me?
I would like to ask, Craig, has, Craig, do you have a drawing on Teresa Lane? Because I think there's some confusion, I had some phone calls on this, and you want to come and bring it up? The, there's some folks that's lived there for an awful long time, that's had farm property there, and they don't want their road closed, so I want to make sure that everyone's on the same page, because portion, portion of that road is private, and the county has no, no jurisdiction on closing it. So I know that gentleman, when you talked last time, you were inferring areas that I don't think are within our jurisdiction. So Craig, go over that, exactly what the petition is, so everyone's on the same.
Well, I mean, basically, the petition was to close Country Landing Drive, it wasn't any more specific than that. I don't, okay, the drawing is up there. Just to orient you, orient, this is Route N, up here at the top of the screen, this is the private portion of Country Landing Drive coming down to this 90-degree curve, and then the public portion takes up right there at the property line for Sedona subdivision, and runs over to this, actually runs over to this, to the dead end, which then becomes a private driveway for the owners of that lot there. So the, so the proposal is to close this in some fashion up here to prevent traffic from coming from Route N down Teresa Field lanes. And that's something that we'll need to look at, what, what might work there to still allow access for everybody that needs it, including these private property owners on either side of the Sedona subdivision there.
Where do the Bennys live? What, what houses?
They're this, this one over here.
That one is there?
Yeah.
And isn't that their road that goes out to Highway N, that wasn't that their original road?
It actually belonged to, to the Rhodes family, and I believe they've granted easements to the owner, to the Bennys, or whoever owned that property before then, to get over there. But they've also granted an easement to the Sedona subdivision, and which in turn, which is what has made this into a, a public portion of the roadway.
Right, so with the Bennys, if they have a right to that road, if it's been that access point for a lot, a lot of years, does the county have the right to close it if they were there first?
That's a legal question, I, I'm not prepared to answer that, would be up to the county councilor. I, I think there's a way to do both, I think there's a way to provide them access and still close the road if that was the decision to go that route, that's something we'll have to look into a little bit further though.
I had to, Greg, is Greg out here? Greg Dorman? Is he, he's the one who responded to that, wasn't it?
He did, I gave you that copy, yes.
Yeah. Okay, well, that's a question, I just don't know if we can do that, I, I mean, that's, but, I don't know, you don't.
I mean, that's, that's something that will be investigated between now and when we come forward, obviously, we'll lay out all the facts, legal and otherwise associated with, with this request, and that will all factor into any decision that is made.
Okay, so if it were, if, if it were going to be considered and it was legal, you would consider it, you'd allow those two driveways, it would just be closed at that end, and those two houses would just exit Highway N that way, is that correct?
Those two houses, and then the Bennys could also potentially have access out that way. We wouldn't have to block off that entire street, the, the public portion, we could block off half of it, meaning like 12 feet, and leaving 12 feet open for the Bennys to use as a driveway out to Route N.
I just want everyone to understand that it's complex, it's not simple, it's complicated, because they had access to that road for a long time, and the subdivision was built, and it's like now we're changing the rules on them, so it's kind of a little different with their property rights too, so that's just kind of my opinion.
Those are all things that will have to be reviewed and looked at very closely.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Anybody else?
Yes, John Conover.
Craig, you want him to show that again?
I was gonna show it, but he explained that there's 12 feet, and there's access, and I apologize, I didn't bring my slides that I had last time on the ninth.
That's okay, we saw them.
Okay, perfect. So just to clear up in regards to the Rhodes and the Bennys, they're actually married. So the Benny, the Bennys married Rhodes, remember, who's in the farthest house, who has that drive. And I spoke to, to Mr. Penny, you know, about regards to getting it closed down, which he was.
Who, Bill?
Yeah, to Bill, which he is all for in regards to getting his private drive back and the traffic that's going down the road, the road repair that he is responsible for, he was fined for litter, the car accidents that could happen on his road that he is held liable for, but since we have the easement, he can't shut it down, unless we give our approval, or the city comes in and blocks the road. So this is option number one, in order for kind of, you know, ease of use and kind of getting things done for him. He's also even okay with blocking it, or would hear or think about blocking it at the tee, where the other two homes would have private access, and he would drive through. It's not his priority to come down Teresa Fields and exit that way, but he goes work down Double D, and, and he was all game for it. The reason why, and while it's convenient for the other side of the neighborhood, and it does provide some convenience, that, that the 23 homes that are north of, I believe it's Briar Common, it receives over 3,000 cars every four and a half days on a very narrow road. And as a gentleman up here earlier was talking about what the cars on the road and being condensed, and even more of that traffic does slow them down, and while speed is a concern of ours, it's mostly the traffic. And even at 25 miles an hour, it's too fast on the narrow road. Our road is crumbling, which I gave you guys pictures of last time, again, Country Landing is crumbling, and there really just, it's just unsafe, right? We've had a lot of mailboxes destroyed, we've had fender benders and car accidents on the road because of it. And really, the only rebuttal to this is convenience. We have Paul Renaud that's coming through and connecting to Somers, it's a new road being built by Liberty High School. It goes up to a lighted exit on the Highway N, which is safe for everyone, versus the big old potholes at the end of Country Landing that fill up with water, and everyone trying to cut in and out, there's going to be an accident on N if there's something that's not done there. It is, it is a true mess in regards to what the residents on that section of the road have to deal with. This is our attempt as a neighborhood to find out what we need to do, right? So we're having a hearing, we didn't know where to start, we're all fearful for our kids, and the 20-plus kids that live in the road, they can't go out in the front yard, you're holding them by the leash. The bus stop with the, there's, there's a throughway on Briar Common at the two stop signs, for the kids, the cars just zoom past, you know, they ignore bus signs, and the bus stops there, there, there are parents that have been flicked off by the incoming traffic, just, it is a true mess in regards to the amount of traffic and what's going on there.
Very good, thank you. Next speaker?
Laura Rhodes.
Thank you for letting me speak, I am one of the additional, like I'm on the other side, the behind Reinhold Electric. And I know, I think it was presented to you at the last meeting that all of us had been talked to, my family has not been talked by anybody from Teresa Field. Our, our biggest concern, I, I under, I feel for the people on Teresa Field, I understand the cars, believe me, we, our mailbox is down on Highway N, we just about get taken out every time from all the people. But it just concerns me because we don't know what the plans are for Highway N, it scares me to just close that road, and to make these decisions, I don't know how it's going to affect me as a property owner, they're talking about, you know, if they, if they close it at Country Landing, if they close it right at Teresa Field.
Are you talking about by Highway N?
Well, I'm talking up by, even up by me, by Teresa Field and Country Landing, because we're the driveway right next to that, so we're the private owners too. And I just, I just didn't know what the whole deal was, I hope that you're going to, where that circle thing is in the back, that's us. And I just.
See, I don't think, we can't close, what I understand you said is, we can't close that, we can only come this away, we can, we can't close it, we can't close your road, it's private.
I know, but it concerns me just with, with the ambulance, fire district, I mean, how are, if you guys close Teresa Field, how are they going to get in there? Because originally, I think it was presented that they were going to close it right by us, I mean, before, and still have just Reinhold Electric using Highway N or the us, I mean, before, and still have just Reinhold Electric using Highway N or the Bennys. It just, I just hope that before you make a decision, that you guys come out there and look at it, which it sounds like that's what he said. But I hope that you also, like I said, my fam, we weren't told anything about this. I happened to see the sign on the thing. So I know they're saying that they've talked with all three property owners and that we're in agreement with it, but I'm not saying we're not, but I'm just saying we weren't told anything until I happened to see that the sign, that this meeting was...
What I'm saying though, right password says the drive, the DR, right past that curve and that last driveway, we can't close anything to the left of it.
Okay.
So that whole road would have, because that's private.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying. So we can't make any decision on closing that anyway. So...
Okay. That's, I just wanted to make, I wanted to make sure that you guys had thought about that. I didn't know if a decision was being made tonight. And that's, I just wanted to make sure that, like you said, if he's going to do an investigation, that's great. But I just hope that we'll be given some options or we'll be told what's going to happen before they just do it, is all I'm asking. Just because, you know, we don't know what's going to happen with Highway N, you know, what they're going to do with that. So it just concerns us too. But I, I mean, if they could do speed bumps or anything to help, you know, slow the traffic down, you know, Paul Renaud has speed bumps, why can't Teresa Field put some speed bumps in? That would help with the traffic. And maybe it would keep people from going that way without having to necessarily just close a road. Plus, I know all those people, it's not just Sedona, the people in the back, Countryshire, they all have easement to that as well because that was all our family's farm. So I don't know if you all, you know, you're going to have to really do some investigation legalized because Briar Chase, Countryshire, and Sedona, all of that was part of the Rhodes family farm. So all those people have easement. So it's not just the people on Sedona that have easement. So that's something to consider too. So thank you.
John Basick.
Esteemed council members, thank you again for putting this on the agenda a second time. I spoke the last time, Country Landing Drive was on the agenda. I'm speaking again because I'm so impassioned about this topic. I'm not going to beligerate my last points. However, convenience does not trump safety. There are multiple other avenues that are much safer. The other areas are not smaller and not narrower, as was previously presented. Lake St. Louis Boulevard and Countryshire are not narrow. And it only increases about two minutes of time for a commute. In manufacturing, we have the law of a hundreds. A hundred near misses equal one accident, 100 accidents equal one fatality. We are nearing the fatality portion on there. As we have had numerous accidents that have been presented by John, also including my mailbox getting destroyed. As an ex-army infantry officer, I've dealt with death, but you're never ready for it. And I'm not prepared for a civilian to have this kind. The road, if not actioned, will one day, will result in death. My vice president asked me, you know, what keeps me up at night? And what keeps me up at night is my two-year-old son or six-year-old daughter accidentally venturing onto that street and being hit. We have a state trooper also residing on that road. And this does nothing to the traffic and doesn't mitigate any of these conditions or circumstances. We have had speed capture contraptions and still nothing has changed. I'm reading a good book called The Oz Principle, which outlines a city council that would only erect stop signs based on the number of accidents and only erect a stoplight if the intersection caused so many fatalities. They waited for a few fatalities before taking action. And really, what the point of this book is, is that if they based it on complaints and nipping in the bud before anything happened, they could have saved a lot of lives. Lastly, I just want to give another real-world example. My grandmother-in-law visited from out of state. On her way going down the correct side of the street, she was almost struck by a driver. The road is curved at an X-axis and a Y-axis. So even though the gentleman said, you know, speed is not, cannot be an issue, there's also that danger with the multiple curves in the axis. Plus, the small width and vehicles parking on the street and the ordered amount of traffic, you know, almost created the conditions that create another accident. So please work to help keep our county safe. And thank you again for your time and God bless.
Thank you.
Mike Conant.
Thank you, council members, for listening to me a second time. I'm here about the parking on Hampton Road and on Plantation Point. I think I mentioned the last time that the gentleman on Plantation Point is deceased, so the handicap parking. And the board's only question, I guess, is on Hampton Road, we think if, you know, we need a handicap parking space there, that's fine. I know that the request is for no parking and to me, no parking is no parking. So I don't quite understand that. But anyway, I just wanted to tell you that we are definitely, as a board, in favor of a handicap parking spot for the lady that lives there.
Very good.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions?
No.
Have a nice evening.
Arne Deenoff.
Thank you very much, members of the council. My name is Arne C. A.C. Deenoff. I'm a public advocate and resident. First of all, I'd like to see that the county change the way that we do business, more transparency. When you look at the county council packet, as I spoke about two weeks ago, there still hasn't been a change with the supporting documents. I don't see where the application is attached to the public hearing, the application by the people in Hampton Woods or Hampton Road or the people off of the subdivision, Teresa Fields, Sedona subdivision. I don't see where the verified petition is attached as a supporting document. I don't see any maps, any supporting documents, the actual complaint, the verified petition, and the attached photos. So we really need to change the way the structure is to provide ample public notice and public involvement. So it's called transparency. The second thing that I'd like to speak about is the Hampton Road request, or I'm sorry, the Teresa Fields request. These are, the Rhodes Inn, I believe it's called Curtis Lane originally, and then for some reason, I think it was changed during development phase. But you have to recall and know that the city of O'Fallon has jurisdiction along with MoDOT on the Highway N portion. Now, we need to make sure that this existing land was here before the subdivisions. The subdivision, which is a business and a few residences, were, are surrounded by subdivisions. We need to make sure that all property owner rights are considered. We need to allow real access to the property for all property owners. We need to make sure that the jurisdiction of any property owner isn't stepped upon or violated. I asked at the last meeting that somebody look and do some investigation into the recording easements on file in the recorder deeds office that had been there for decades before the subdivision was even considered. And also, I'd like the county to look at improving the road with a intergovernmental jurisdiction with the city of O'Fallon, the city of Lake St. Louis, and MoDOT. This roadway needs access for, one, traffic relief and, two, emergency responders. I ask that you, as county council members, go in there there in the morning and see the stack-up upon stack-up at all the exits of the subdivision of Briar Chase, Sedona, and the other subdivisions in the area. There's a backup between 7:00 and 8:30. And then I ask that you look at the backups on Highway N into 364, trying to gain access going back. You have to understand that this is the largest population growth in the state of Missouri in the Highway N, Highway Double D corridor, Highway N being north, Double D being south, all the way to Highway Z and Highway T. This is the most growing sector of the state of Missouri and we need to have a partnership and intergovernmental agreement with MoDOT to make the road improvements and make the safety improvements because there's backups and the road just isn't safe. There's no shoulder in some ways. There's no guardrails. There's no sidewalks. It needs some major upgrades for safety. So I ask that we look at all these and consider all these issues before jumping to a conclusion. There's a lot of missing parts here. It's a lot of jurisdictions involved. I want to make sure that we don't get involved in a lawsuit, a legal battle that'll cost taxpayers money in the long run. And that the utmost is that the backup of traffic leaving the subdivision, entering the subdivisions, both in the morning and afternoon, and our first responders having access. So if you close a roadway, you're going to limit access, you're going to have backups in the other entrances. Thank you very much.
Next speaker?
That was the last speaker on traffic regulations.
Okay. All right. Then we'll close the public hearing on traffic regulations and open up the public hearing on setting the 2019 tax rate. Does anybody from administration want to add anything to this before we have the hearing?
I'll answer any questions you might have.
Pardon me?
We're obviously available to answer any questions that you may have.
Very good. Okay. Any speakers?
Arne Deenoff.
Thank you very much, members of council, once again. My name is Arne C. A.C. Deenoff, public advocate and resident. First of all, we are the number one county in terms of growth across the state of Missouri. We are growing by leaps and bounds. We are returning at or past the '06, '07 thresholds of building permits, both residential and commercial. Now, I'd like you to consider giving taxpayers a break this year. We have had a reassessment in 2018. We do that every two years. The reassessment has been from a minimum of 7% all the way to 15.7%, depending on where you are in the county. Some people saw more of a tax assessment and some people saw less. Now, I want to draw your attention to our growing revenues as a county because we are increasing population and commercial growth. In 2017, our new residential and new construction commercial was $112,788,232. In 2018, our new residential growth and our commercial growth was, new construction was $127,311,781. In 2019, our residential, new residential and new commercial growth, construction, And in 2020, we are projected to go over the $200 million mark of new construction, both residential and commercial. Now, how that works with residential and commercial is it's built. If it's built in the middle of the year, after 30 days after being occupied, it goes on the county tax rolls. If it's residential, it goes by 19%. If it's commercial, it goes by 32%, divided by 100 times the tax rate. So as you could see, our county income and our county revenues have grown. And what is of realization is that we have full compliance of our state constitution, especially full compliance with the voter-approved Hancock Amendment, that you don't take in any more revenues that you got last year and that because of the reassessment, that you lower the tax rates in the general fund, the road and bridge fund, and the 911 dispatch tax fund to make it balance out so taxpayers aren't hit in the pocketbook once again. Now, we fund our parks and recreation operations, our parks and recreation land purchases, our parks and recreation maintenance, capital expenditures, and general expenses through a use tax fund, which you charge us as residents 1.5% on any purchase over $2,000. And that raises about $17.5 million annually. Our general fund for this year, you have the proposed rate at .1781 of $1. I am asking that you amend that and reduce the tax rate to .17 cents even. On our road and bridge fund, which takes in over $3 million, I'm asking that we reduce the, your projected .0400 tax levy to .0375 and that would be in full compliance with the state constitution Hancock Amendment. The dispatch and alarm, I'm sorry. For our general revenue fund, it would be zero and you have that zeroed out. For our road and bridge fund, you project .1781 cents. I'm asking you to reduce that to .17 cents even. And for dispatch and alarm, you're projecting a 4-cent tax levy. I'm asking that you reduce that to .0375 cents per $100 assessed valuation. To bring a combined tax levy of .2075, that's .2075, that would be full compliance with my discussions with the state auditor's office and full compliance of the Hancock Amendment. And because of the huge increase of reassessment, I'm asking that we lower the tax rate so taxpayers are put first and not the politicians who think that money just keeps growing on trees outside of the county executive office building. Thank you for hearing my comments.
Are there any other speakers?
Not on the tax rate. We're finished with the public hearing.
Very good. We'll close the hearing on the setting of the tax of 2019 and proceed to public comments. This is a time when anybody can come before the council and speak on any topic. Once a topic has been arrived at, we allow three speakers pro and three speakers gone. And we ask the speakers to limit their time to three minutes. Are there any speakers?
Yes. Chris Hammond.
My name is Chris Hammond. No relation to Mr. Dave Hammond here. This is my son, Daniel, and we're here to speak about the youth athletic, or activities park, potential expansion with the pump track. My son here is six years old, is really big into riding his bicycle right now, just like his dad. And we're really excited about that. We've been, we're actually from Wildwood. We're not in St. Charles County. I haven't lived here in about 19 years, but we're from Wildwood and love making it out here to YAP and using the facilities as they are today. And we look forward to hopefully you guys moving forward with a new pump track. And we just wanted to make it quick and show our support.
Very good. Thank you.
Kyle Krangle.
Hey, how you doing? This is, I thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. I am speaking about the expansion in the youth activity park and the addition of the pump track that we, that we're talking about. So I'm here to represent myself as well as about almost the entirety of that side of the room. As cyclists, we're all very passionate about this. So I'm born and raised in St. Charles County. When I was growing up in St. Charles County, I skateboarded and had all the fun hobbies. I didn't have a skateboard park or anything to use. And so we traveled to Columbia, Missouri to go use the one out there. And we want to be able to bring this kind of thing to St. Charles County for the generations to come. This would be the magnitude of the one we're talking about, would be the first one of its kind in our market. The closest thing we have to this is Northwest Arkansas and Springdale, Arkansas. And most, myself as well as most of the room travels down to that part of town, that part of the country, anywhere between three to five times a year, some of us two to three times a month. And while we're down there, we spend money. You know, we pay taxes and we enjoy drinking beverages and eating food and shopping at the stores and staying at the hotels. And so we bring revenue to the town we go down there. And I think this kind of a park would bring a lot of that attention to us. So let me figure out where I'm at in my notes here. I'm sorry. So this would give St. Charles really a point on the map. What we're talking about here would get national attention. Arkansas recently hosted the world championships and it was in Arkansas, Northwest Arkansas. It's beautiful.
Hey, careful now.
Hey. We spent a lot of money in Northwest Arkansas. We love it there, but it's not, it's not St. Charles County. You know, and there's, I think there's a lot here. And of, and to even speak about the age gap, I mean, his six-year-old son, I've got my three-year-old who's being fairly good tonight, and my wife. And so we all ride bikes and we all travel frequently to go ride these types of things. Down in Arkansas, then the world championships, surprisingly enough, the three people from St. Louis participated in the world championships, were all over the age of 40. And so I know we would call this the youth activity park. I know it's on the docket possibly to rename the park and kind of rebrand it a little bit. But this is going to bridge the gap between riding anywhere from, you know, 18 months, which is when my kid started riding a bike, all the way up to 40s, 50s, and 60s. I think we even have a member of the community that rides with us well into his 70s and participates in trail builds and everything. The neat thing about a pump track, if you're unfamiliar with what a pump track is, it kind of bridges the gap between what BMX is for kids and mountain biking is. BMX is traditionally more of a kid's hobby. Mountain biking is traditionally more of an adult's hobby. And a pump track kind of bridges that gap. And so allows people to enjoy it from all different, all different ages and walks of life. The other thing I want to speak of also on behalf of local businesses, I work with Momentum Cycles, who's been supporting the cycling community in St. Charles County for 22 years now. We also have members of that own businesses as well, Adam, Joey, and Tony, also own businesses in St. Charles County and St. Louis County. And we love selling bikes. But more than selling bikes, we love people riding bikes. And that's what we're passionate about. And I really think bringing something like this to St. Charles County is going to get more people riding bikes, more people outside and enjoying everything that we have to offer. I'm sure that's my timer. that's my timer. I got to about half of what I wanted to talk about. Thank you very much for the consideration. We're all very, very, very passionate and excited about this.
So, to summarize what you're saying, is you're pumped about the pump track?
I could not, I could not have put it better myself. Thank you, Mr. White.
Are there any other speakers?
Arnie Dineoff.
Thank you once again, members of council. My name is Arnie C. A.C. Dineoff, state and county public advocate and resident. The first thing I'd like to address is on the consent agenda, the appointment of Brian Ludwig to the Civil Service Commission. Brian Ludwig is not an officer of the St. Louis County Police Department. However, let's give him the credit and the honor where it's due. Brian Ludwig is a lieutenant major colonel of the St. Louis County Police Department in charge of the entire patrol division and in charge of over 800 employees. So, I got to know him at the United States Civil Court in a civil rights case in which St. Louis County lost $750,000 back in July. I feel that he should be our St. Charles County next police chief. He's well-educated, well-versed, knows about community and community policing, as I think that Dave Todd needs to retire at this time and allow new leadership and fresh new ideas. So, I would be in total support of Brian Ludwig to be on the Civil Service Commission. He'll be a great asset to our county. Now, I was going to talk about Chris Hunt's free pass and doing civil rights harassment, but I'll keep that to the next meeting because he's just a ticking time bomb waiting to explode and a bomb go off in which he has violated the civil rights of many residents in which you promoted him from patrol person to captain. And as Chief Todd says, he supports somebody that lost the civil rights case for $80,000 that you settled, and he was a convicted felon in Montgomery County jury trial. And so, it's wrong that he keeps doing civil rights and you allow him a free pass because of his association with Joanne Lycam and David Todd. So, he's a ticking time bomb ready to explode and cost his county civil rights and taxpayers money. Now, let's move on to the ballot measure, bill number 4770, the rezoning of 2776 Technology Drive. I'm sorry, it's the CID bill. I asked that the Community Improvement District build, and instead of a one-by-two sign, that we go by a three-by-four feet sign, give taxpayers a fighting chance for fair and transparent notification. And then, on the next bill at 2776 Technology Drive, I asked that you override, five members override the county executive's veto. I asked that you put your heart and your mind in doing the right thing. There was no notification or fair notice to the party who was on the application. This is playing politics and playing favoritism. Look at all the comparable uses on all three sides of this property. It's all commercial. Use your mind in not the pay-for-play politics scenario. It's here, like was done in the St. Louis administration in St. Louis County, that takes place right here in St. Charles County. I asked that you override the county executive's veto.
Time's up, time's up, Mr. Dineoff.
Well, if you hear it sometime, it'd be great. Upon further review, you've reconsidered?
John, did you have all the speakers on the pump track? Did everyone speak on the pump track?
Oh, sure. Come on up. Yes, uh-huh.
So, I'd like to pick up what Kyle left off. I think he did a great job. My name's Brett Dickens. I'm born and raised in St. Charles. I'm a cyclist. I'm a father. I have two kids, five and seven. We're big in the BMX community. I'm very big in mountain biking. I've been to Arkansas, I don't know, 15 times in the last three years. I love it. I've spent a lot of money down there. You know, that place has grown and grown and grown and grown. Now, that's the Walton money, but we could do that here without the Waltons, you know. Look at, look at your Highway Inn place, you know. You've got the opportunity to bring Olympic-level athletes into there for an event. You could have a race, a demonstration, whatever. You could set up booths. You could sell tickets. You could pay for this investment, honestly, in two events. You do once-a-year event, you get, I mean, Red Bull sponsorship, you know, to come in and put on an event. That's, that's global media, you know. Don't just think of this as, you know, a handful of people. As you're driving home tonight, pay attention to the cars on the highway. How many cars do you see that have bike racks on the back? And any bicycle can utilize a facility like this. It doesn't have to be a, you know, a kid's jumping bike. It doesn't have to be a full-blown mountain bike. When we're down in Arkansas and we see moms and dads on cruiser bikes and even people, you know, short of their elderly years that are out there just getting exercise, just pedaling around, it's an opportunity. It's a training area for people to go. And you don't have to worry about cars. You don't have to worry about easements. You don't have to worry about traffic. You can just go and have a good time. And if you're putting it in at a park such as Highway Inn, you've got concessions onsite. You could set up a small pro shop that would then benefit the, you know, the community, the, or, you know, the Parks and Rec. You know, somebody blows an inner tube, you sell them an inner tube. They're back out there riding, you know. And the Parks and Rec just made $2.50, you know. It's, it's not, it's not something that's just going to be you're throwing money at it. You know, you market it. It's going to come back around in a year. There's a place in Cleveland, Ohio, that's in the middle of nowhere. It's in an industrial park, and over 400,000 people go there to ride indoors in the wintertime because they have the opportunity to go and train and continue to enjoy their sport. Now, you know, this is the Midwest. You don't like the weather, you know, wait, but time doesn't run out on that.
That's the final speaker?
That's the last speaker. I think that last gentleman spoke as well as our parks director could have spoke about the subject. So, very good. With that, we move on to the oral. Your speakers?
That was 3-4.
Pardon me?
That was 3-4.
Oh, okay, okay.
Evening, gentlemen. Sorry I come here unprepared, but I'm here to ask the county to reconsider 4750 for 2676 Technology Drive. The current owners are friends of mine, and they were not even notified that this was coming back up for, was coming back up for consideration. They'd like an opportunity to be able to be heard again. They were never notified for, on tonight's hearing. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is that the last speaker? So, okay. Then we move on to the oral report from the county executive element.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have an oral report. I know there's going to be a lot of discussion about 4770 at some point. It's, of course, up to you, but I would suggest that, that after that's read the first time, it'd be tabled and that you schedule a public hearing. I know there's a couple of people that I've already talked to that want to be heard on this, and I'm sure there'll be people on both sides. It should be an interesting discussion, and there's really no hurry on acting on this. So, that's my request, and of course, it's your call.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I thought we had some time limitations on that. So, is that what you all understood too? We're talking about the same thing?
Let's wait till it comes on the agenda and talk about it.
Well, we really need to bring it up. You know, before we proceed with the consent agenda, we need to bring up the bill number 4760.
Oh, I see. Yeah. Why do I make a motion to amend the agenda to bring up bill 4760?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries? Can you read the bill?
Bill number 4760, in ordinance amending ordinance 18-030, accepting plans and specifications, ordering the improvements be made, setting forth a proposed assessment role, and authorizing interim financing for the improvements for the Saratoga Heights Sanitary Sewer Neighborhood Improvement District.
Is there any discussion on 4760? No? Do we proceed with the vote then?
Yes.
Okay.
In ordinance amending ordinance 18-030, accepting plans and specifications, ordering the improvements be made, setting forth a proposed assessment role, and authorizing interim financing for the improvements for the Saratoga Heights Sanitary Sewer Neighborhood Improvement District. Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin.
Therefore, bill 4760 has passed, and we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Joe voted yes. I don't know if you saw.
I did not see. So, he did. Okay.
He said yes, but it didn't come across. So, he gave you a thumbs up.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries?
There it goes.
Very good. We went through that.
That's pump track.
You guys are going to get pumped now.
I would like to point out, though, that you still have to go to Arkansas to get Yingling. It leaves for the next couple of years. So, I appreciate the fact that you only go down for the track and it's not for anything else. So, we'll try to get everything else done in the next couple of years.
Okay, very good. Next on our agenda is resolution number 19-06.
Resolution number 19-06, sponsored by John White. A resolution reappointing Mark Osman to the Board of Trustees of the Greensbottom Levy District Number Two.
Any discussion? Seeing none, read the title and call a roll.
A resolution reappointing Mark Osman to the Board of Trustees of the Greensbottom Levy District Number Two. Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Resolution number 19-06 has passed, and we move on to bills for consideration, reconsideration. We already did that.
No, bill 4750.
Okay, 4750.
Bill number 4750, in ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from R1A Single Family Residential District to C2 General Commercial District as per application RZ19-08.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to table this particular bill for reconsideration, seeing as the applicant, you know, has not had a chance to be here and has county executive mentioned a chance maybe to look at this a little closer and discuss it a little bit longer.
All right.
Before we do that, I agree with Terry, but David had come all the way. I was, I, yeah, I just wanted to give him the opportunity to, he said he brought a bunch of information and he wanted to talk tonight because he didn't put his name on a public comment card. So, I just wanted him to be able to give his position so the applicant understands where he's coming from.
Okay. Would you like to come forward?
And can I ask, how come they weren't notified? How come the applicant wasn't notified? Isn't that, is that not our procedure or what?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
My, my comments earlier were about 4770. That's the Community Improvement District bill.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Okay, I didn't want anybody to, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. And of course, yeah. I was curious why we moved up 4760, but I thought I was missing something. So... Yeah, yeah. Well, you moved it up for the right reason, but it didn't have anything to do with what I was, what I was talking about.
Yeah, right. It has something to do with the consent agenda.
Okay, apologize.
But David, what, for, for the applicant, ma'am, the, I talked to your, your clients or whomever they are, and we had a conversation. I was in favor of this, but then he said that there were a lot of points that we missed. And so, we're going to have this conversation, and then I do agree to table it for your opportunity, for your, your people to come in here. But go ahead, Mr. Zucker.
Thank you.
I understand that we're not going to vote on it tonight. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman and members of the county council, I'm Mayor David Zucker of the city of Darden Prairie. Thank you for the invitation to speak. I didn't get notice either, but I read the published agenda on your website. So, that's why I'm here today. I'm here to ask the county council to sustain the veto of bill 4750, which would rezone a small parcel at 2676 Technology to the county C2 Commercial District. The staff has provided you a handout that I prepared to ease your pain tonight. Please see tab one. This is an aerial depiction of the area, including Darden Prairie Town Square Shopping Center and parcels south of Highway Inn. It's all enclosed in the, in the colored marker and the red arrow that depicts the subject property. The area within the enclosure here is all C3 Retail Commercial, which was adopted in Darden Prairie in 2016 to promote commercial development. And as we'll see here in a moment, how we went about that and why. The property south of Route Inn, I'm sorry, did you not get it?
No, I wanted to give, I wanted to get it.
Ah, okay. Thank you. Thank you. The property south of Route Inn is for sale and ripe for development, which we're happy to facilitate. The reason, primary reason that we're opposed to the rezoning is that many permitted uses in county C2 are not allowed in the Darden Prairie C3. And at tab two, I've laid this out for you so that there are a number of uses that are permitted, not even conditional, but permitted in C2, county C2. They're not allowed in Darden Prairie C3. There are also uses that are permitted in the county C2 but are conditional uses in Darden Prairie C3. There are some uses that are permitted in county C2 that are only available under a planned unit development in the C3 zoning district in Darden Prairie. There are some conditional uses permitted in county C2 that are not allowed in Darden Prairie C3. And there are a few uses that are allowed in C3 that are not expressly permitted under the county C2. So, there is a significant amount of incompatibility or inconsistency between the county C2 zoning district and Darden Prairie C3 Retail Commercial. And we think that the highest and best use that could be achieved in the, in the property in question or in the property surrounding it would be to go forward under the Darden Prairie C3 zoning code. I understand from watching the video record of the previous proceedings here and a review of some email correspondence that was generated by representatives of the applicant, that there were two points made that I like to take some issue with. I understood that it was represented to the council that Darden Prairie was opposed to the annexation of this parcel back in 2017. And that's not true. And I provided at tab three, the, an excerpt of the election authorities' results of the April 2017 election. Please notice here on page four of 11, Darden Prairie Prop D. Proposition D was the annexation for this particular property. The voters of the city of Darden Prairie voted 86.44% in favor of annexation, not opposed, but 86% in favor. There was one vote in opposition to the annexation. A person registered at the parcel. Now, I heard the representation was made that Mr. and Mrs. Zonard did not vote against annexation and that they were in fact out of town. Well, that may be. But take a look at tab four. Those are the three people who are registered to vote at the parcel at 2676 Technology Drive. And there, Mr. Brewer voted in the April 2017 election. One negative vote. So, the only reason that property wasn't annexed to Darden Prairie was, we infer, one negative vote, and that, that's Mr. Brewer.
Is he the 10th?
I have no idea who Mr. Brewer is. I have no idea. Second thing that came to my attention was the representation that... Second thing that came to my attention was the representation that Darden Prairie was hostile to small business development, and that's absolutely not true. We're, we're clamoring to get folks to come into Darden Prairie, to invest, to open businesses. Now, I recall a conversation I had with the property owner in 2017, and it was apparent that she had been informed by the owner of a nearby parcel, that the City of Darden Prairie was opposed to, to new business coming into the area. Well, I, I'll tell you, that is absolutely false. And with respect to the property owner who's putting out that false representation, we've worked with prospective businesses that were looking to buy that guy's property, and to encourage them to come into the city. Those three, in the last two years, have been three prospective businesses. They could not close the deal with the seller. Had nothing to do with opposition or, or foot dragging from the City of Darden Prairie. In fact, we even amended a conditional use in, in our C three zoning district, which you can see at Tab six. There was a business that engaged in the, in the sale, retail sale of signs, and also had a small manufacturing part of that business, which we thought was a permitted use in our light industrial zone, not in the C three. So we amended the C three zoning code to permit this particular business, or a business like it, to come in to Darden Prairie. Unfortunately, he and the, and the seller couldn't come to terms, and they, they're in Lake St. Louis now. We had, we had two other businesses that sought to settle their, the problem wasn't the City of Darden Prairie, the problem was the property owner. Now, I'd be happy to meet with the Zonners, be happy to discuss with them what it is that they would like to see happen with their property, I'm completely open to that. And all I can say is, I haven't heard from them since 2017, when they or their tenant voted against annexation, and we're striving to develop that, that area, and we'd appreciate it if the County Council would sustain the veto, and give us an opportunity to have a rational discussion that would lead to the highest and best use for all of that property, including the Zonners. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to stumble through and answer for you.
Do you have any comments, or you want to just wait till your clients show up at the next meeting?
Right here, what's that mean?
You have not reached out to the Zonners. I know that for a fact. If you had reached out to him, you would have been able to answer.
Ma'am, if you're gonna speak, can you please come up to the microphone, so we can all?
Hey, David, let's, that's, that's fine, but what we can do is just, after the next meeting, you can tell us that you had a conversation with him, or tried to reach out to him, that would be helpful.
Our city attorney spoke with Mr. Zonner last week, and, and he reported to me the, the gist of that conversation. I did not speak to Mr. Zonner last week, because I had surgery, and I was convalescing at home. So the city attorney, in a series of back and forth voicemails, finally reached him, and, and Mr. Zonner was noncommittal. Whether they spoke about this meeting tonight, I cannot say.
It, it wasn't spoken about, and in addition, it's his property rights. If Mr. Zonner wants to sell and still stay unincorporated, he should have that right. There is nothing that's gonna stop any developer from purchasing for him at fair price what, what his property is worth.
Sell it, I'm happy if somebody wants to come in and buy it and develop it, that's fine, because...
Okay, that's, that's good.
Yeah, with all due respect, you can have that debate another time.
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
You know, I supported this before, and exactly what she's talking about, this person is in an unincorporated county, and they wanna rezone their property, so they can get a better value for their property when they sell it. So, to me, I don't understand why we're not moving forward and going ahead and approving this, so these people can market their property as a commercial property in the county, and if, once that's done, if somebody comes forward and wants to purchase that, in addition to other properties around there, to put in a larger development, it works great. But, I don't, I can't support tabling this, or voting against what's been proposed, and I, I support this, this rezoning for this property for that reason.
Mr. Chairman?
Any other question for me?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, under the Charter, under two point six, there, it may require that the vote be taken within thirty days of the veto. So, based on that, it would be, it would require a special meeting to accomplish that. So, if we do table it, that would be what would, would be required, to come back in a special meeting, to record the yays and nays on the question that's laid out in the Charter.
All right. So there was a motion to table?
Well, I, I withdraw that motion now, that, it obviously doesn't apply to the situation.
I just, I guess, David, I got a question for you, I'm trying to understand, you can come up here, sir, and use the microphone. If I own that piece of property, I'm trying to figure out my perspective. I don't know why they don't wanna come into the city, I don't quite understand that, but I don't also understand why we should make them come in, however they're looking at it, I don't know how they're looking at it, but I don't understand, they're trying to get their property zoned, and whether or not it's in Darden Prairie or not, I don't see why that's any of our business, unless I'm, I understand, though, I also see the perspective where you're trying to do a uniform boundary of your city, and it kinda makes things awkward, and we try to get rid of these, these donut holes, so to speak, and I understand that, too. But, man, I don't know, I don't understand why, why would, why do you think it's better for them to come into Darden Prairie?
Sure. Well, first of all, I have no idea what their plan is with the, with the property. If you rezone it, there are permitted uses that they can simply open up whatever business they want that's a permitted use, they don't have to make a conditional use application to the county. And there are, as my chart shows you, there are a bunch of permitted uses that are incompatible with the surrounding property, and that's the primary reason for our opposition. Now, if they, if they wanna market that to somebody else, you know, again, the same problem, they sell it to somebody else who could legally open a business that's one of these enumerated permitted uses under the County C two, that's incompatible with the C three zoning, permitted or otherwise, in the adjacent parcels. So, that's the basis for our objection. And we, we'd love to have them come in the city if they want. If they sell the property to somebody who's on the ball, they'll obviously wanna come into the city, so they can be part of the, the more generous C three retail commercial zoning district, so it's thirty-one permitted uses, designed to facilitate business, not to restrict it. So, that's my position.
So, as I understand it, at that, at that point in time, they could come to you and ask to come into your, your city? But this would not have any bearing on that at all, if we approved this tonight, override the veto?
Except that.
They, they possibly could put something there that your city doesn't approve of.
Yes, they could, and, or a purchaser.
At that point, you could negotiate with them, and ask them, that would be your time to talk to them, and see if they come up to what your standards would be.
Well, but they, they have no, they have, they don't have to do that.
I know they don't have to, but that's where you could sell your city to them.
Right.
Okay, all right.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
All right, so...
John, what is it, what is the, are Joanne or, or John Watson, what is it now, the yes is for what, and the no is for what?
It, under the Charter, under two six oh four, in the veto section, it requires the council to take up the action and record the yays and nays.
So was it, what does it say, Terry?
So yes means you wanna pass the bill.
Okay, so yes.
And no means you support the veto.
Okay, I, I'm just gonna say, I'm gonna support, I'm not gonna support the veto, because, and I respect, I'm gonna vote yes, and I respect David Zucker, and I understand what he's trying to say, but the only thing is, is we did not, the, the folks who are trying to sell the property aren't here, and since we're under a timeframe, I think it's only fair to give what the council passed to the property owner, and then David can revisit with, with the property owners, but that, I just don't feel comfortable, I agree with Dave Hammond on this, I just, I wish we had more time to, to have a conversation, but, you know, I, I don't know why the mayor and the, I guess your attorney reached out to him, but I wish there was a little more conversation going on, this, this, but...
All right. Is there any other discussion on this bill? Well then, let's proceed with the roll call on forty-seven fifty.
Shall the bill pass the objections of the county executive notwithstanding? An ordinance amending the zoning district map of the County of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from R one E, Single Family Residential District, to C two, General Commercial District, as per application R Z nineteen dash zero eight. Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
No.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
No.
Okay, the forty-seven...
No, it didn't, it didn't pass, it needs five.
You have to have five?
You have to have five to override the veto.
It didn't pass?
Okay.
Stands. Being, seeing with that, forty-seven fifty didn't pass, but we'll move on to bills for final passage, starting with forty-seven fifty-nine.
Bill number forty-seven fifty-nine, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the County of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from I one, Light Industrial District, with floodway fringe and density floodway overlay districts, to I two, Heavy Industrial District, with floodway fringe and density floodway overlay districts, as per application R Z nineteen dash ten.
Are there any questions or comments, or comments on forty-seven fifty-nine?
Uh-uh.
Seeing none, read the title and call the roll.
An ordinance amending the zoning district map of the County of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from I one, Light Industrial District, with floodway fringe and density floodway overlay districts, to I two, Heavy Industrial District, with floodway fringe and density floodway overlay districts, as per application R Z nineteen dash ten. Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes. That bill has passed, and we already went over forty-seven sixty, so we'll move on to Bill forty-seven sixty-one.
Bill number forty-seven sixty-one, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute surface transportation program agreement, award name number STP seven three zero two six seven eight, with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for reimbursement of eighty percent of eligible costs, up to a maximum amount of one million twenty thousand dollars, to reconstruct part of Goodemuth Road.
Are there any questions or comments on Bill forty-seven sixty-one?
Uh-uh.
Seeing none, read the title and call the roll.
An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute surface transportation program agreement, award name number STP seven three zero two six seven eight, with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for reimbursement of eighty percent of eligible costs, up to a maximum amount of one million twenty thousand dollars, to reconstruct part of Goodemuth Road. Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Forty-seven sixty-one has passed, we'll move on to Bill forty-seven sixty-two.
Bill number forty-seven sixty-two, an ordinance authorizing execution of documents for and receipt of grant funds up to the amount of five thousand seven hundred fifty dollars, from East West Gateway Council of Governments Financial Assistance Subaward Agreement, Project two thousand seventeen U A S I, equipment and supplies, and further amending ordinance eighteen dash one seventeen by providing related supplemental appropriations to the budget of the Office of the Medical Examiner.
Are there any questions or comments on Bill forty-seven sixty-two? Seeing none, read the title and call the roll.
An ordinance authorizing execution of documents for and receipt of grant funds up to the amount of five thousand seven hundred fifty dollars, from East West Gateway Council of Governments Financial Assistance Subaward Agreement, Project two thousand seventeen U A S I, equipment and supplies, and further amending ordinance eighteen dash one seventeen by providing related supplemental appropriations to the budget of the Office of the Medical Examiner. Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes. Bill number forty-seven sixty-two has passed, and we'll move on to Bill forty-seven sixty-three.
Bill number forty-seven sixty-three, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a sixth amendment to the intergovernmental agreement with the City of St. Charles for collection of taxes.
Are there any questions or comments on Bill forty-seven sixty-three? Seeing none, read the title and call the roll.
An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a sixth amendment to the intergovernmental agreement with the City of St. Charles for collection of taxes. Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Bill number forty-seven sixty-three has passed, and we'll move on to Bill forty-seven sixty-four.
Bill number forty-seven sixty-four, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Weldon Spring for collection of Neighborhood Improvement District Special Assessments.
Are there any questions or comments on Bill number forty-seven sixty-four? Seeing none, read the title and call the roll, please.
An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Weldon Spring for collection of Neighborhood Improvement District Special Assessments. Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Bill number forty-seven sixty-four has passed, we'll move on to Bill forty-seven sixty-five.
Bill number forty-seven sixty-five, an ordinance amending Section one six zero point zero nine zero, ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, O S U C M O, regarding court costs.
Are there any questions or comments on forty-seven sixty-five? Seeing none, read the title and call the roll, please.
An ordinance amending Section one six zero point zero nine zero, ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, O S U C M O, regarding court costs. Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Bill number forty-seven sixty-five has passed, and we move on to Bill forty-seven sixty-six.
Bill number forty-seven sixty-six, an ordinance requiring the fingerprinting of licensees in specified occupations for criminal history record information from the Missouri State Highway Patrol and Federal Bureau of Investigation.
Are there any questions or comments on Bill number forty-seven sixty-six? Seeing none, read the title and call the roll, please.
An ordinance requiring the fingerprinting of licensees in specified occupations for criminal history record information from the Missouri State Highway Patrol and Federal Bureau of Investigation. Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes. Bill number forty-seven sixty-six has passed, and we move on to Bill number forty-seven sixty-seven.
Bill number forty-seven sixty-seven, an ordinance fixing and establishing the rate and levying of taxes for the General Revenue Fund and for various special funds of and for the County of St. Charles, Missouri, for the year two thousand nineteen.
Are there any questions or comments on forty-seven sixty-seven? Seeing none, read the title and call the roll.
An ordinance fixing and establishing the rate and levying of taxes for the General Revenue Fund and for various special funds of and for the County of St. Charles, Missouri, for the year two thousand nineteen. Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Forty-seven sixty-seven has passed, and we move on to bills for introduction, beginning with forty-seven sixty-eight.
Bill number forty-seven sixty-eight, requested by Sarah Evers, sponsored by John White, an ordinance approving execution of an intergovernmental agreement with the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services, M O D H S S, for a grant award in the amount of three thousand dollars, to help local and state public health agencies improve the quality and completeness of data for the Enhanced State Opioid Overdose Surveillance, E S O O S, program for the St. Charles County Department of Public Health.
Are there any questions or comments on Bill forty-seven sixty-eight? Seeing none, we'll proceed on to Bill forty-seven sixty-nine.
Bill number forty-seven sixty-nine, requested by Dave Todd and Samantha Shadrock, sponsored by John White, an ordinance amending the two thousand nineteen budget for positions within the St. Charles County Police Department Bureau of Administrative Services to reallocate positions within the Records Division.
Are there any questions or comments on Bill forty-seven sixty-nine? Seeing none, we'll move on to Bill forty-seven seventy.[1748.83]
Bill number 4770, requested by Steve Ellman, sponsored by John White, an ordinance calling for the amendment of the Charter in the form of a proposition requiring that consumers be informed of tax rates and community improvement districts within St. Charles County on the August 4, 2020 ballot.
Are there any questions or comments on 4770?
Well, I guess what we're going to do is have a public... Have a workshop or a public hearing on it or something like that. And Steve, can we...
That's what I'd like to see, but that's obviously up to the chairman and all of you.
That's what we'll try to proceed and do.
Can we add something in there about... I know this probably has a lot to do with the Winnsville thing that we just saw last week, but can we add anything in there about... Can they take on, like in that Winnsville sports complex they're looking at, including, like those shops that are already established? They're going to make them pay the tax, and they're already an established business, and I don't think that's fair at all.
We can... I mean, we can talk. There's a lot of things we can do, or we can do nothing at all. The thing about this is I purposely did not put this on in April, but asked that you put it on in August. By that time, the General Assembly will have a chance to meet, and my hope is that they'll go ahead and reform this whole system, and we won't even have to worry about this anymore. But I... The problem is, we can't tell people how to do a CID. That's per statute, and cities and these people that form them have every right to do so. It's all we're doing is making sure that our people as consumers know what's going on. And again, for just us to do it will be great for us, but I'd rather see the state legislature deal with this in an intelligent way and take care of everybody.
All right.
But again, you know, there's going to be a lot of discussion about this, and there's a lot of arguments, pro and con. I know several people that would like to come and testify. I'm sure there's many others that'd be interested in this. So, I just... I would just encourage you to do like you have on many of these issues and keep an open mind until you've heard everybody's arguments and then take action.
When would we... When would you suggest we have a workshop?
That's up to you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Very good. All right, we'll work on that.
Before the next meeting, late October, I guess. I mean, let's just go. But I know Mr. Klingham called me, and he... Did you want to... Mike, did you want to make a comment from St. Charles City's perspective, or you want to just wait?
We could wait until the...
Work session?
There's a lot of comments that need to be made on this.
Okay.
I agree with Steve. We can start to wait until the time.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, we'll set up a work session on this.
How much time do you think we need, Steve? An hour or more than that?
Well, again, I think you schedule for an hour. If there's still more to be heard, you schedule another, another one. There's no... Again, we've got plenty of time to put this on. And again, we may... You may decide to put it on, and then the legislature may act, and we take it back off.
All right. I'll set it up for the next... Before the next meeting.
Yeah, let's just get going.
All right. Okay. All right, that concludes bills for introduction. And there's tabled bills?
I'd like to remove bill 4748 from the agenda.
Second.
From the table.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Okay. Motion carries. Table bill number 4748. Will you read the title?
Bill number 4748, an ordinance of the county of St. Charles, Missouri approving the preliminary plat and final development plan for the Missouri Bluffs PUD.
Are there any questions or comments on bill 4748?
Is Mr. Cronin still out there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right.
I have a comment.
Okay, proceed.
There was a lot of work done on this development by a lot of people. A lot of people put a lot of effort in it, and I'm fully confident now with all the recent developments that this will be a very good residential development in St. Charles County that disturbs very little of some very beautiful land, but preserves a great deal of this land. So, that's the same reason I'm very supportive of this bill right now.
Okay. Very good. Is there any question... Any other questions or comments on bill 4748? Seeing none, read the title and call the roll, please.
Bill number 4748, an ordinance of the county of St. Charles, Missouri approving the preliminary plat and final development plan for the Missouri Bluffs PUD. Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
No.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Bill number 4748 has passed, and that concludes all the items to be voted on this evening. We'll move on to announcements and miscellaneous.
Let me start real quick, if you don't mind. I just want to talk a little bit about what we just did, and then I'm going to leave it to Steve. But with this development, it's only going to be... It started at about 500 acres, and it's only going to be 30 acres of developed ground. And then, Steve, go ahead, or John, or whoever.
Yeah, I just want to take the opportunity to applaud everybody involved in this process. It started almost 22 months ago, and I think the council has been very, very patient and given everybody numerous opportunities to be heard on this, whether they're for it or against it. And I applaud that patience. I think after the first decision was made to approve the zoning, regardless of how you voted on that, I think everyone on the council and everyone at the University of Missouri that I talked to agreed on one thing, and that is, we don't want to have to go through this again. All right? Should someday the golf course fail, or should this project fall through and we have to come back and look at another proposal? I don't think anybody wants to go through that again. And because of that, as you all know, we, after that initial decision was made by you, started talking to the university about the possibility of buying the underlying fee on the golf course, as well as additional ground around the golf course, with the view of making that a St. Charles County public park. And I'm here to tell you that, basically, as of this morning, we have an agreement in principle with the university to buy that property, and we will be presenting, hopefully at the next meeting, the actual terms of that agreement, which I think are very, very favorable to the taxpayers of St. Charles County. We'll guarantee that this project in the future remains either a golf course or a